...they wanted, how they wanted it drawn up, especially with all the ordinances that have exploded, oh, I'm sorry, the pipelines that have exploded in a lot of different neighborhoods in the past couple of years. But even with a comprehensive plan, many of the commissioners didn't ask either. The same with the set, with, with that being sent back here. Did any of you ask the commissioners why it was sent back? Did any of you ask them what they wanted in some of the ordinances as to why it was that they weren't happy and they wanted it sent back? The order line didn't always help everything, but what it did do is it made the people who made the ordinances, made the laws and passed them, it made them liable personally, not just the township, but you personally. So I think, I'm finished. I think that what you all need to do as you're making decisions today is you have to think about who it is that you're making decisions for. I know I'm not the only one that's not been happy with what's happening here. Thank you. Kana Wad?
Hi, Wad, 609 Oberdick Drive. I'm just gonna read this narrative, I'll keep it under three. As you all know, I'm newly elected commissioner of Ward Two. However, tonight I come before the planning commissioner to concern residents. Question, uh, proposed tonight are my personal thoughts. These thoughts are in no way to be construed as agreed upon by the board of commissioners, no way. I'll ask any questions about any of my thoughts, but I promise to answer them in my best, best way. But I can't answer for board commissioners. So here we go. I feel that I haven't done enough to fully understand the long-term effects of fracking for oil and gas extraction. As you all may be aware, the state of New York has banned fracking. This is a giant order line, giant. First-class townships are of course mandated by PA municipal judge to provide reasonable development and maintenance. Believe our township has already fulfilled this legal obligation by permitting Huntley to begin operations at the Apollo B site. There are currently three additional well pads being proposed by Huntley and EQT, Plutus, Cranic, and the third, my entitled. Therefore, I will ask you, the planning commission, to consider preventing any future permits for gas and oil operations. This can be done through ordinance. Limit gas operations to industrial zones as conditional use. Increase the setbacks to 1,500 feet. Limit the number of oil wells or well pad. There's certainly many more ways to limit future oil and gas operations. I would ask the planning commission to consider any and all thoughts in that regard. Now, limiting operations will likely draw a lawsuit from Huntley and EQT. This rate risk may be worth it because concerned citizens group in our township, they're gonna bring a lawsuit if we continue on our current path. Currently, the commissioners have asked the planning board to amend the oil and gas ordinance to allow for freshwater and pump impoundments. Huntley has asked for a pump station in his own recreational area to supply this impoundment. This process seemed logical to me because this would reduce truck traffic on our township roads. However, the commissioners have already reduced truck traffic by restricting the truck traffic to state roads. The agreed-upon truck route is from Sudersville Bridge on the Plaidell Road on the Nichols Hill Road. All Pennsylvania state roads barely entering our township. Permitting a pump station and freshwater impoundment will have no effect on truck traffic to the Apollo B site because Huntley is currently preparing the site. They will begin drilling operations very soon. The proposed pump statement and freshwater impoundment have not yet been constructed. Therefore, Huntley will have to use their trucks to do this site. If the planning commission limits future well pad development, I got one more sentence, then this freshwater impoundment and pump station, they're not needed. The other three proposed well pads become permitted. The freshwater impoundment pump station idea should be reconsidered. This will definitely help reduce truck traffic because these sites are further into our township. We have yet to figure out how we're gonna police the truck traffic. Township has not arranged for monitoring noise levels, air quality, or water quality. I think we should stall this process as much as we can. Thank you.
Mike Lucas?
Yeah, um, I think we've just, Huntley, Huntley, and we have three or four other individuals. I think we can just.
You're already pretty far past page. Scott call?
You know, about 15 months ago, I got a phone call from Huntley and Huntley. My farm is located on Falling Timber Road, right across from the Humane Society. And when they called, they wanted to come out and talk to me about how we can reduce truck traffic within the entire township. Yes, I'm aware that they're using the current roads that they have right now, but with my location as well, the Plutus well site, there's gonna be additional trucks there to be needed for that as well, too. However, when we met back 15 months ago, they gave me the idea that they have a, a solution, a pond, if you will, to put on my particular property, which is an ideal location. It means all the zoning, or not the zoning, but the distance requirements that are required. In fact, just so that you all know this, and I have invited all the planning commission as well as commissioners to my property to take a look at it. Kathy did last week. Now, with, with regard to that, not only would the pond be of merit to us as a township, but also to all of us as residents, because now we're not gonna have to deal with the truck traffic at that point. Here it is statistically, even with the other, the vehicles moving on the other roads, per well, per well, one lateral 10,000 feet, it takes 5,000 trucks to, to provide water for that. Now, if we can eliminate 90% of the truck traffic, which is basically well trucks, I think we're gonna be all the better for it. When I saw the plans that they drew up, conceptually, it made a lot of sense, not only to me, but also my wife. And we did agree to allow to have them put a pond on our property when it's so permitted at this point. And I really believe if by permitting this pond there at our particular property, it will be a big relief for the entire township to alleviate the truck itself. But again, the invite is there for anybody here on the planning commission, and please come out, I'll show you where the locations are, as well as the wellhead location, which are perfect locations that'll be hidden from anything on the roadway. I like that a lot as well, too. So, but that's all I wanted to say for today, okay?
Thank you. Cindy for call?
Thank you guys for taking some time to give us to make some comments about these things. Definitely want to begin with the fact that when we look at new ordinances, changing existing ordinances, that can become a really emotional thing for everybody. And I just wanna say that I'd like to hope that we would all be reasonable and stop and think about whether what we're proposing here tonight, that you all have to choose to approve or disallow, that we really as citizens should be looking at it, is who does it benefit? And who does it hurt? If, if anybody? I think those are our responsibilities as citizens and as commissioners and members of planning. So, the ordinances that we're looking at for today are actually designed to protect the rights of leaseholders, people who, when we purchase property and enter, entered into an agreement, I realize that that's not everybody, but we certainly are. I'm a lifelong resident of the township and we are leaseholders. So, when we entered into an agreement for property that we own, it was, of course, expecting that there would be some future development of that property if it's going to be helpful to the township. We've always believed that it would be absolutely financially helpful to the township, I think that's, that's a definite of that. And that having this, these sites protected by ordinances that already exist, or ordinances that could change to protect everybody who lives near the well sites, would be our goal. I definitely support the fact that having the reduction of truck traffic, I, I remember these meetings a year ago, that that was the biggest complaint most people had. Trucks, noise, destroying our roads. And I honestly don't see that the biggest distinction is whether they're state roads or township roads, that destroying our roads, they already look pretty bad in some places. So I think that this was a good decision to consider something that would reduce that traffic. The centralized water and the ability to use water that we already have absolutely is something that I would highly recommend that we support. It is, it is important. And as far as the, um, let's keep this real short.
You have about 15 seconds.
Okay. So the setback requirements, let me just address that for a second. I believe that the setbacks, based on research that I have seen, is that the board came up with setbacks that are far more restrictive than Pennsylvania state setbacks, and definitely require noise, lighting, and other restrictions that exceed those of other communities. So I think that we've really done our part, you've done your part, and I firmly suggest that you support those recommendations tonight.
Thank you. Scott Taylor?
Evening, everybody. Scott Taylor, 304 Mohawk Drive. To start, as president to protect Elizabeth Township, I had our legal service, Fair Shake, draft a letter up and I get one understand he, and this into Matt Rakounis a few days ago, email and mail it in. I have a copy for all you guys in case you didn't have it yet. So I'll make sure you get it. Do you have copies?
Yeah, y'all have it.
Okay. We'll skip that part. Regarding the ordinance revisions that have been submitted back to you guys, changed a little bit, as I'm sure you've noticed from what you give to the commissioners a lot of. Overall, the, what's drafted in, what you guys have back here, there's some parts that need to be addressed and are conflicting. 603B setbacks reach 750 feet, which is what you guys offered to the commissioners. We've asked the commissioners at the public settings to increase that to 1,500 feet, similar to what Forward Township just did. They took some language out of Forward Township's revisions with the allowing the commissioners to override that 750 feet to go closer if the property owner agrees to it, but they ignored the 1,500 feet for some reason. So I don't know what Forward Township has learned and what they know versus what we're trying to do here, but that was from, is just to go to 1,500 feet. Just many municipalities have gone 1,200, 1,500 feet. There's even one locally that restricts surface activity in our township. If you want the gas from underneath them, you have to drill in from outside the township. 603F, no definition of freshwater intake in the definitions. We talked about it being allowable, but there's no definitions to what it is or what it entails. I think that needs to be in there. 605.3, why remove the number of wells? When we're talking about modifications to existing structure to their oil and gas operations, we talked about the size, the width, the equipment on the pads, why are we taking out the number of wells? 608H, some wells, said if not within 750 feet of structures, that should be on all wells, period. That was one of the 30-plus conditions that were supplied, much like the rest of those conditions, should be part of our ordinances, not just the 750 feet. There was actually a conflict here with, oh, 603B and 6031, where 1,500, or I'm sorry, where I want 1,500 feet, where you guys are using 750 feet from the wellhead, and then you're also using 750 feet from the edge of the well pad. I suggest we go to 1,500 feet from the edge of the well pad, that would eliminate all the confusion of discerning between the two. That's all I got. Thank you.
Kimberly Price? Danny Hoffman?
Danny Hoffman, Solarway Dump and Station, right. We keep coming back, and we keep coming back, and we keep coming back. We keep offering information from other townships and all of the townships around us. We are not listened to, we are not paid attention to. We seem to be a non-existent entity. Everything that Cindy Rodgion, Scott have already said, these are things that are important. These are things that you do not listen to, these are things that we try to explain to you, these are things that we have said at the commissioners meeting, including the 1,500 foot setback, which Matt tended to ignore at that time. So, I don't know what to tell you, because you don't listen to what the Supreme Court rulings are, you don't check into the townships around you, you don't follow the rules that you should be following. This is not in the wisdom of the people before us. 2012 was a long time ago. Things are different now. We know more things now. We know what happens. There's more information out there, and you choose to ignore it. Your job is not to choose to ignore it. Your job is to listen, and your job is to protect the people of this township, not industrialize us, not put us out there for big business. Thank you.
Russ Verbanek?
Hello, Russ Verbanek, 325 High Street. As you can see, I support oil and gas development and feel that having water and paint facility and centralized freshwater impoundment in Elizabeth Township is a good decision for our community. While I'm a supporter of development in our community, I realize that it will bring a temporary influx of traffic. The ordinance changes that the commissioners have recommended will allow projects in the township that will greatly reduce traffic in our neighborhoods and increase safety on roadways. The freshwater intake facility and associated centralized impoundment that Huntley and Huntley wants to build in Elizabeth will allow them to pipe freshwater to their sites. This will reduce the truck traffic, as mentioned before, by like 5,000 back-and-forth truck trips per well. Now, Huntley, Huntley has planned for five wells at the Apollo B site, and they're planning permit six wells at the Plutus sites. The trucks that haul these, the water for these operations will need to travel on the roads throughout the day and night during fracking, so eliminating them will greatly improve the experience for the township, while allowing the residents to benefit from the drilling. I should also add that, like they mentioned before, they intend to use the same facility to pipe water, the future, the future pad locations in the township. So the impact will be even greater as more wells are permitted. Also, other gas and oil companies may drill in the township, and these ordinance changes would allow them to reduce truck traffic for their wells. As I have said in earlier planning commission meetings, this common sense, all outlets lies, freshwater impoundments to reduce the truck traffic. Even if you don't support oil and gas development, taking thousands of truck trips off the road will benefit all the people and should be supported. I also oppose any attempt to further increase the drilling setbacks. 550 foot limit is a safety limit set by the state. Drilling that was done under this limit has shown it is adequate to protect the public. Increasing setbacks does not increase safety, just makes it harder for landowners to access their resources. For example, when we learn to drive, we were taught that you should maintain a car length for your car, and the car ahead of you to reach 10 miles per hour of speed, okay? Increasing that, or two or three car lengths doesn't make driving any safer, it'll only make it a lot more difficult to drive anywhere. Similarly, increasing setbacks beyond 500 feet has no safety benefits. It is simply adapted to use by those who oppose to the use of fossil fuels, like New York State, to ban drilling in the township, and does nothing to improve the safety of the residents. Thank you.
Glenn White?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, oh, okay. Ted Price?
Ted Price, I unfortunately left most of my stuff at home because I was at a cross-country event and didn't think I was even gonna be able to be here. My concerns are multifold. There was a back and forth between Huntley in the whole writing of the oil and gas at the planning commission level for months on end, and the only thing that Huntley didn't get out of the deal was the fact that there was going to be essentialized impoundments, and the decision from this board was that there would not be a centralized impoundment. That then goes forward to the commissioners, and it is written in the commissioners that the suggestion is to go ahead and do that, not written by the commissioners, but written for the commissioners. They had the chance at that point in time to accept that, they did not. They said that they had problems with several parts of this ordinance, and not just the centralized impoundment, and they wanted to send it back here to try to clear up several parts of it. That was the whole reason, is to mean send back here, not to go ahead and approve something that they could have approved in their meeting, that they did not approve, and they just tabled it and said, there are problems with this, you need to look at it again. When Forward Township was at 1,000 feet for their setback, and they move it to 1,500 feet for their setback, and they lived through the time that they've had things happen to them, they know that there are issues. And the reason they went to 1,500 feet when they were already at 1,000, double what the number was back in the day when an arbitrary number was assigned, was to go ahead and take care of problems. So now, it's even worse because the, what was the original plan that left out of this planning commission was 750 feet, and if it's between 500 and 750 feet, you can get a waiver. Now, the language is, if it's less than 750 feet, you can get a waiver. Five feet is less than 750 feet. The way that's written, something is five feet away, if someone signs a waiver, okay, fine. You're leaving zero protections whatsoever, because you're not even having the 500 number when you go ahead and say completely less than 750 feet, and not the 500 and 750 that you had before. There, there is, in the end of this document, there is the penalties phase, and that is not highlighted. And when I went through and checked the original verbiage, what is online now on eCode, and looking to what is in that, the penalties has changed, but it's not highlighted, and the penalties are not the same as what it said before. So we have sand trucks that are coming in, that are still gonna be issues even without water trucks. We have water trucks that are gonna be put into a centralized impoundment. Where are we gonna get this water from? We're gonna get this water from the Yocagani. What is Forward Township getting their water from? Forward Township's getting it from the Monongahela. The Monongahela is a much bigger river than what the Yocagani River is. When you're pumping water out, sure, right now when we have floods all over the place, people can give away water, but later on in life, that is not gonna be even close to be the case. If you have a pump station sitting down along the Yoc River that is low, because I kayak down there all the time, there are parts of that Yoc that are extremely low, and the area that they're in isn't exactly even very high. If you're pumping water from that area to go ahead and create these things, you are draining a resource that we can't get back. So these have long-term implications that the plant, that the commissioners said, that the commissioners said, you have more than just that to consider. You have that if you're going down in the river, we have placard signs on the trucks. There's all the different things, I'm gonna wrap it up. All the different things that were sitting when they did the Apollo B, all those different restrictions that were put on there should be things that should be considered as restrictions here, and you're needing to consider more than just, let's give them an centralized impoundment.
I don't mean to cut anybody off, that's what I want everyone to speak, but it's, it's a matter of fairness, we wanna make sure that no more person.
So we're gonna do the Apollo B, Kim Price?
You're gonna call Blaine.
Blaine first? Blaine Lucas?
We're all gonna do Apollo B now, right? Okay.
Okay.
And planning Blaine Lucas, um, Ash Town in Pittsburgh, we're going to huntley and Huntley Energy Exploration LLC. We're here before you today on Huntley's application for two additional wells on the previously approved Apollo B well pad. Just to rehash the history of this, to make recall, in 2017, Huntley submitted an additional use application for the well pad and five wells. Planning commission proceeding, two hearings, board of commissioners, and in December of last year, the board approved the well pad application, subject to 40 conditions, four zeros. Huntley was okay on all those conditions, there were three that they had problems with, and a deal was filed subsequently. The township, or the board of commissioners, and Huntley worked out language through your solicitor to modify those conditions a little bit, and there was the balance, there's still an effect. Site construction recently commenced on pad, and as I indicated, I know five wells that were approved. There are additional two that Huntley would like to do now, two additional Marcellus wells. Now, it's Huntley's position, actually, if you look at sections 5A and 5C of ordinance 896, that we really don't even really need to be back here on a conditional use application, because the ordinance is set up in a way, in our view anyway, that once the pad's approved, all you need is a zoning permit at that point, an amended zoning permit, make the condition on the fact that you meet all the conditions. However, at the request of your solicitor, and the township generally, it was suggested that Huntley apply for basically amended conditional use to add these two additional wells, and that's what we're here on now. I'd like to stress, and Ryan Daley from CEC is going to give a brief site overview, and actually is gonna be fairly short, because things really haven't changed. There's not, there's no change in the pad, there's no change in access drive, there's no change in what is now the agreed to truck routes for the facility. And I'd also like to add that although we're increasing the number of wells from five to seven, it's really not gonna be any short-term impact, because the two Marcellus wells that we're requesting approval for will replace two previously approved, what are called upper Devonian wells, on the 2018, 2019 schedule. So in terms of short term, we're still only gonna be doing five wells. We'll ultimately have approval for seven, but in terms of short term, it's really not gonna affect scheduling much at all.
Can I ask you to explain that again? I didn't understand that part, where you're replacing wells?
Okay. Five wells were approved previously, three Marcellus and two upper, what are called upper Devonians, a different strategy. We're now requesting approval for two more Marcellus wells, which will bring the total to seven approved wells if, if the township approves them. It's not gonna change the, the, anything as it relates to 2018 and 19, because Huntley's changing out the two upper Devonian wells, and basically you're putting them on shelf in the short term, in exchange for getting the two new Marcellus wells. So we'll still be doing five wells in the 2018, 2019 timeframe. We'll have approval, if we get approval for a total of seven, but we're not gonna be doing all seven of them in 2018 and 2019. I'd also like to point out that although it's not part of this application, it may come up, Huntley's also submitted well permit applications to DEP for two additional Unical wells. Those are not on the schedule anytime in the future, and we've acknowledged that if we want to move forward with those two additional Unical wells, we'll have to get the necessary township approval for those. So, just so, if you notice that they're sent out, and you hear that there are a total of nine wells, those last two are not anywhere in the current plans, and we can come back to the township at the appropriate time. I think everyone recognizes that, you know, scheduling and demand can change over a period of time. Here tonight, again, we have Ryan Daley from CEC, Jennifer Hoffman, you all know from, or EH and S of Regulatory Vice President, Kim Price from Governmental Affairs, and Vance Hazard from Operations.
Is adequate to protect the public. Increasing setbacks does not increase safety, just makes it harder for landowners to access their resources. For example, when we learned to drive, we were taught that you should maintain a car length for your car and the car ahead of you to reach 10 miles per hour of speed. Okay? Uh, increasing that by two or three car lengths doesn't make driving any safer, it only make it a lot more difficult to drive anywhere. Similarly, increasing setbacks beyond 500 feet has no safety benefits. It is simply adapted to use by those who oppose to the use of fossil fuels like New York State. To ban drilling in the township and does nothing to improve the safety of the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Len White?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, oh, okay. Um, Ted Price?
Ted Price, I unfortunately left most of my stuff at home because I was at a cross-country event and didn't think I was even going to be able to be here. My concerns are multifold. Um, there was a back and forth between Huntley and the whole writing of the oil and gas at the planning commission level for months on end. And the only thing that Huntley didn't get out of the deal was the fact that there was going to be essentialized impoundments. And the decision from this board was that there would not be a centralized impoundment. That then goes forward to the commissioners and it is written in the commissioners that the suggestion is to go ahead and do that. Not written by the commissioners, but written for the commissioners. They had the chance at that point in time to accept that. They did not. They said that they had problems with several parts of this ordinance and not just the centralized impoundment. And they wanted to send it back here to try to clear up several parts of it. That was the whole reason it's going to be sent back here, not to go ahead and approve something that they could have approved in their meeting that they did not approve. And they just tabled it and said, there are problems with this, you need to look at it again. When Forward Township was at 1,000 feet for their setback and they move it to 1,500 feet for their setback. And they've lived through the time that they've had things happen to them. They know that there are issues. And the reason they went to 1,500 feet when they were already at 1,000, double what the number was back in the day when an arbitrary number was assigned, was to go ahead and take care of problems. So now, it's even worse because the, what was the original plan that left out of this planning commission was 750 feet. And if it's between 500 and 750 feet, you can get a waiver. Now the language is, if it's less than 750 feet, you can get a waiver. Five feet is less than 750 feet. The way that's written, something is five feet away, if someone signs a waiver, okay, fine. You're leaving zero protections whatsoever because you're not even having the 500 number when you go ahead and say completely less than 750 feet. And not the 500 and 750 that you had before. There, there is, in the end of this document, there is the penalties phase and that is not highlighted. And when I went through and checked the original verbiage, what is online now on E-code and looking to what is in that. The penalties has changed, but it's not highlighted and the penalties are not the same as what it said before. So we have sand trucks that are coming in that are still going to be issues even without water trucks. We have water trucks that are going to be put into a centralized impoundment. Where are we going to get this water from? We're going to get this water from the Yawkagany. What is Forward Township getting their water from? Forward Township's getting it from the Monogahela. The Monogahela is a much bigger river than what the Yawkagany River is. When you're pumping water out, sure, right now when we have floods all over the place, people can give away water. But later on in life, that is not going to be even close to be the case. If you have a pump station sitting down along the Yawk River that is low, because I kayak down there all the time. There are parts of that Yawk that are extremely low and the area that they're in isn't exactly even very high. If you're pumping water from that area to go ahead and create these things, you are draining a resource that we can't get back. So these have long-term implications that the complaint, that the commissioners said, um, that the commissioners said, you have more than just that to consider. You have that if you're going down in the river, we have placard signs on the trucks. There's all the different things, I'm going to wrap it up. All the different things that were sitting when they did the Apollo B. All those different restrictions that were put on there should be things that should be considered as restrictions here. And you're needing to consider more than just, let's give them an centralized impoundment.
And I don't mean to cut anybody off, but I want everyone to speak, but it's a matter of fairness. We want to make sure. No normal person can.
So we're going to do the Apollo B, um, Ted Price?
You're going to call Blaine.
A Blaine first? Blaine Lucas?
We're all going to Apollo B now, right? Yes, okay.
Okay.
And, uh, Plaid and Blaine Lucas, um, Ash Allen at Pittsburgh, we're going to Huntley and Huntley Energy Exploration LLC. Uh, we're here before you today on Huntley's application for two additional wells on the previously approved Apollo B well pad. Just to rehash the history of this, to make our fall, in 2017, uh, Huntley submitted an additional use application for the well pad and five wells. Uh, the planning commission proceeding, so we're two hearings, one with the Board of Commissioners. And in December of last year, the board approved the well pad application subject to 40 conditions, four zeros. Uh, Huntley was okay on all these, all those conditions that were three that they had problems with. Uh, the deal was filed subsequently, the township, or the Board of Commissioners and Huntley worked out language through your solicitor, uh, to modify those conditions a little bit. Uh, and there was the balance, which is similar to that. Um, site construction recently commenced on the pad. And as I indicated, I know five wells that were approved. There are additional two that Huntley would like to do now, two additional Marcellus wells. Now, it's Huntley's position, actually, if you look at sections 5A and 5C of ordinance 896, that we really don't even really need to be back here on a conditional use application. Because the ordinance is set up in a way, in our view anyway, that once the pad's approved, uh, all you need is a zoning permit at that point, an amended zoning permit. Make the condition on the fact that you meet all the conditions. However, at the request of your solicitor and the township generally, uh, it was suggested that Huntley apply for basically amended conditional use to add these two additional wells. And that's what we're here on now. Like to stress, and Ryan Daley from CEC is going to give a brief site overview, and actually it's going to be fairly short, because things really haven't changed. Uh, there's not, there's no change in the pad, there's no change in access drive, there's no change in what is now the agreed to truck routes of the facility. Uh, and I'd also like to add that although we're increasing the number of wells from five to seven, it's really not going to be any short-term impact. Uh, because the two Marcellus wells that we're requesting approval for will replace two previously, uh, approved, what are called upper Devonian wells, uh, on the 2018, 2019 schedule. So in terms of short-term, we're still only going to be doing five wells. We'll ultimately have approval for seven, but in terms of short-term, it's really not going to affect scheduling much at all.
Can I ask you to explain that again? I didn't understand that part. Were you replacing wells?
Okay. Five wells were approved previously, three Marcellus and two upper, what are called upper Devonians, a different strat. We're now requesting approval for two more Marcellus wells, which will bring the total to seven approved wells if, if, if the township approves them. It's not going to change the, the, anything as it relates to 2018 and 19, because Huntley's changing out the two upper Devonian wells. And basically you're putting them on shelf in the short-term in exchange for getting the two new Marcellus wells. So we'll still be doing five wells in the 2018, 2019 timeframe. We'll have approval if we get approval for a total of seven, but we're not going to be doing all seven of them in 2018 and 2019. I'd also like to point out that although it's not part of this application, uh, it may come up. Huntley's also submitted well permit applications to DEP for two additional Unical wells. Uh, those are not on the schedule anytime in the future and we acknowledge that if we want to move forward with those two additional Unical wells, we'll have to get the necessary township approval for those. So, just so if you notice that they're sent out and you hear that there are a total of nine wells. Those last two are not anywhere in the current plans and we can come back to the township at the appropriate time. Uh, I think everyone recognizes that, you know, scheduling and demand can change over a period of time. Uh, here tonight again, we have Ryan Daley from CEC, Jennifer Hoffman, you all know from, uh, our EH and Asset Regulatory Vice President. Uh, Kim Price from Governmental Affairs and Vance Hazard from Operations. Basically, our intent is to have Ryan to do a short presentation showing what's involved with the two new wells. How they don't implicate anything adverse as far as setbacks under either the old ordinance or the new setbacks under the new ordinance. Now then, Kim is going to give just a brief overview of how Apollo fits in with the other well plans and envision water sourcing that's going to take place. Those applications aren't before you tonight, but we always get a lot of questions wanting to understand the big picture of impact and how it's all going to go together. And so Kim is going to give a brief presentation in that regard. So with that, I'll just ask Ryan to come up and get a couple of boards out and we'll go from there. Hey Ryan, the first board you've placed up here is the drawing C-100, which was submitted with the, the current application. If you just could get an overview of, of what it shows.
Alright, so I think you're familiar with this site already, but this is Nichols Hill Road, um, coming up here and then Fallon Timber Road up above here. Um, the access road comes in off of Nichols Hill Road, um, comes around up the hill to the, uh, well pad site. The well pad is approximately 350 by 500 feet. Um, and as Blaine mentioned earlier, uh, that was, um, previously approved and the design of the site has not changed as part of this application.
So no change to the pad, no, no change to the access?
Correct.
Um, let's talk a little bit about the, uh, the truck route in and out of the site. If you want to be aware of the situation.
Alright, so this first board over here is the primary haul route, um, the route that the majority of the trucks will be taking. Um, as you enter into Elizabeth Township, uh, you cross the river on, on Douglas Road Road. Um, you'll proceed to Nichols Hill Road and then up to the pad site.
Yes. Now this is, uh, if you could explain the alternate route also.
Yeah, so this is the alternate route, um, this will be used when they have oversized, uh, vehicles that need to get into the site that won't be able to traverse the primary route. Um, so those trucks will come up Route 51, um, to Route 48 and then down Simpson Howell, Howell Road to Fallon Timber. And then on to Nichols Hill to the Apollo B site.
Now, basically, this is the reverse of what originally Huntley proposed last year. And this was the issue that was resolved as part of consent order. Basically what happened is we did, Huntley agreed to the township's request, but basically flipped those priorities. So the primary access route for all overweight vehicles other than, um, large rigs that can't go up, uh, Nichols Hill and the like, uh, will, will come in from, uh, Sooters Hill. Whereas the, what we originally designated as the primary route, Route 51 to 48 and the like, is now only going to be used, uh, when there's large rig movements. And the agreement between Huntley and the township requires, uh, that Huntley have flaggers, uh, and the like as, as part of that process. So Ryan, it's fair to say that the, the primary truck route for water trucks, for example, or, or sand trucks and the like, is going to be, uh, the one coming in from the east across the river of the site.
Yes, that's correct.
Now let's, uh, if you could, let's just show the board what, if anything, is going to change on the pad. Uh, if you could pull up.
I'm drawing SP-01. Yes, so this is drawing SP-01. Um, it looks very similar to the drawing that was submitted at the initial application. Um, the five wells are listed in, that are shown in the straight line up here were the five initial wells. So the three Marcellus and the two upper Devonian. Um, these two wells shown down here are the new 7M and 9M, Marcellus wells are being proposed tonight.
Is anything changing other than the addition of those two additional wells?
No, so the, the rest of the pad, um, is still configured the same as it has been.
Um, might I ask a question? Or should I say? Okay, on the papers that we got as part of our packet for the 7M and the 9M, it does show the 1U and the 3U. Are you going to give us a new packet or it'll be removed from our information?
Um, no, they are not part of the current application.
So they just stay on here?
Yes, they'll stay on here.
They'll stay on, but we, they're not part of the current application. Um, Ryan, let's just talk, if you could pull up, uh, back to drawing C-100, the aerial printout here. Let's talk about setbacks for a moment. Now, underneath the current, the one that's proposed now, setback required when it's 500 feet from the well head to an existing building. And 300 feet from the outer edge of the well pad to an existing building. An existing building also confined to occupied structure, right?
Correct.
Um, it does, did, did the plan that's approved last year meet those setback requirements?
Yes.
Um, were there any buildings at all within, in the greater, we mean, it's 500 feet from the well head to the existing building? Well, maybe not against the 300 feet from the well pad, I thought, further. Uh, were, were there any buildings at all within that?
No.
And was the closest, uh, structure from the well door, uh, the vacant surface owner property located to the, uh, northeast of the well pad?
Yes.
And that was how far away?
Uh, it's approximately, uh, 893 feet from the center of the pad.
Okay. So now, just to cover our bases in terms of the proposed ordinance, if applicable, uh, that ordinance has a setback of 750 feet from the well head to an existing building. And then also 750 feet from the edge of the pad to an existing building, it was in a residential district, which is, right?
Correct.
So effectively, uh, that, that ladder requirement is the result of a setback almost 1,000 feet from the well door to the building, is that right?
Uh, pretty close when the wells are located in the middle of the pad.
Now, the proposed ordinance also refers to existing buildings, the occupied structures. Um, and it also, the proposed ordinance allows the waiver, the fact that the property owner would enlaid those provisions. Does the current pad, the old wells or the new ones, will they comply with the proposed setbacks under the proposed ordinance?
Yes, they will.
Can I ask another question then? Um, this well, the application came in under the first ordinance. How does it become the new ordinance that we don't even have yet?
Well, our view is if we're still under the old ordinance, but if someone wants to take the position as under the new, our only point is that even with the higher setbacks under the proposed ordinance, um, this well pad would comply.
Okay, but I think we need to stick with the original, because there's all these ordinances out there and this one is under the original, correct?
Wait, 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 I just, well, it's not saying under the old one, setbacks are smaller. They're going under the wider ones.
But that's the one that they applied under, correct?
They're, they're just speaking to both of you. They're saying, yeah, it's the old one.
Okay, I just want to be sure.
I mean, I think the better, the longer setbacks, the better.
Or would they reapply under the new ones? I guess why I'm asking, because I know people asked for a moratorium at one point and we didn't do it. So they put it in under the old one. I don't know what we're living with. I think we have to be real clear.
You're living with the ordinance that's in place right now. They, you go by the time of submission, so the time that they submitted, we're going by that one. His only point was, even had the new one been in place, they're still compliant, that's all he said. He's not saying they're submitting under that, there's anything. We're compliant with the ordinance as it is. However, even if you extended those setbacks, we're still compliant, that's his point.
Right, I agree.
Actually, that's my观.
Um, Ryan has looked over the old C-100, which shows the old setbacks.
Yeah, that's true, that's true too. Whenever you do changes like this, do you, um, approach the homeowner and the listed property and let them know what you would be doing, like adding more to it?
Uh, that would be a question for Huntley.
So, yeah. Are they aware?
Yeah, yeah, we, any changes that, that might be made to our location, uh, whether it's number of wells, whether it's a change in the actual design, are always discussed with the, with the surface owner.
Thank you.
Now, just briefly, uh, there's some records about sound walls. Under the current ordinance, there are requirements of sound walls. And Huntley presented information to show that they would be ordinance requirements, uh, despicable without a sound wall. However, Huntley proposed and agreed, and conditioned, sound walls being installed on two sides of the well pad. Um, the, now, proposed ordinance requires sound walls on sides where the edge of the pad is within 750 feet of the existing building. Uh, again, there are waiver requirements and we talked about this before, that, uh, if Huntley would comply with those requirements and then. Um, briefly then, Ryan, you, you had a little bit of interaction with the township engineer on this application, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
And with an initial comment letter dated, uh, or date of letter, but your response to that, uh, was dated September 18th of this year, is that right?
Yes.
And, uh, that included response to certain comments, it included providing additional documents to Blaine?
Correct.
And as far as you know, uh, as the engineer speak by this, that they have all those, uh, comments been actively addressed?
Yes.
Now, it was a follow-up meeting with the township engineer where it was requested, uh, this last week, correct? Uh, that you, uh, go and critique the, you know, conditions, uh, and not only the conditions of the ordinance and how Huntley would comply with the original merit. But also how Huntley would comply, or has complied with all of the conditions of the approval from last year. And did you put together documents, submit that to the engineer?
Yes, so we amended the project narrative to include, um, all the conditions that were, um, put on the original approval. Um, and we included our responses to those conditions.
And I don't know whether the commissioner has a copy of that yet, uh, what, what's provided to the engineers and, and you have. So, um, that's all we have in terms of this, uh, you know, the lay of the land, so to speak. So if the commissioner has any questions for Ryan, I'm going to be happy to answer them. Then we just wanted to have, uh, this Bryce make a, just a brief overview of how, um, the Apollo well pad kind of fits into the bigger puzzle. Particularly in terms of the handling of projected water supply.
Um, you're here about the, uh, 7M and the 9M, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so they are laterals too, uh, and we haven't talked about laterals. Um, so, in my, um, information that I brought, um, how large are your drilling units for each of these laterals in acres? Jennifer might know that.
So in general, we don't set up our drilling units until, um, later, at, at a later stage, it's not during the planning stage. Um, so I don't have that answer for you right now.
Okay, so we don't, you don't know that, even though?
No, no, that's, that's the, that's the, um, I believe that's the DEP information that we sent in for our, for our wells. Right, our, for our, for our drilling permits, right? That's different than our, than our actual drilling units. Um, those unit, that unitization isn't set up until later, say, maybe.
Okay.
Um, the laterals you see on there.
Okay, these two, okay. For these laterals and all laterals, could we have the exact addresses from the top hole to the bottom hole? Because I have trouble just looking at this. I'd like to know, um.
The lat, you mean the lat longs?
The addresses, so that I can follow the path and see where they fall.
So, so, um, that's not a requirement for the ordinance and it's also not a requirement for DEP. Um, so.
I was asking for, that's, okay.
Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't think it was probably a requirement, but I thought it would be helpful.
Um, I'm not sure exactly what you're asking for, um, like properties along the lateral?
Yeah, properties along the lateral.
Yeah, we're not going to supply that, no. I'm sorry. It's not part of the ordinance requirements and it's not part of DEP requirements.
Okay.
But we do notify everyone, um, every single landowner that's along that lateral as part of an area of review assessment. So they all get a copy of the, um, of, of that, uh, pathway and, and, uh, so they're.
They have.
That's correct.
And they know they're the 7M, they know they're the 9M.
They get an area of review assessment that shows that, um, where the pathway of the lateral is so that they can, um, respond appropriately.
Okay, and you do have signed leases with all those people at this time?
Uh, I believe so. If we don't have a signed lease, we can't drill it, say, maybe.
Okay, but, so there would be any problem later on? I just want to make sure that that's already been taken care of, because I would want somebody to come back and hold it.
Prior to drilling, you wouldn't be held responsible for that? Prior to drilling, um, we have to have all leases in place.
Okay. Uh, as more wells are drilled on the Rollha well pad, will there be a change in the diameter to the gathering line or a change in the pressure to the gathering line? And then it's like the, um, haul wells, are there any changes to that gathering line?
Um, so, we have a, um, a ESGP and actually an approval from the township on the Apollo gathering line. Um, the, the, um, I believe we have, um, approval for two gas lines and a freshwater line, um, for that location through the DEP. It's all in the same right-of-way, so those have already been approved.
I just wanted to make sure, uh, the, and the gathering line still going to the Dominion?
Yes, that's correct. So that hasn't changed since, since you guys saw it last year?
And I did have some pictures here that, since you're here, I, I need to be here tonight, that I would like to ask you about. Um, anyway, had to do with the gathering line. I didn't under, we don't have the pictures, forgive me. If I find them, like, I'll ask you.
I, I'm sorry. Yeah, no, that's all right.
Um, so at this point, we're going to have Bryce to give a, a kind of general site overview. Ryan, if you could pull up, maybe get a draw.
I'm going to turn this, this one around and make sure they get you, you're done with these.
Yeah, we, like, nobody's to see anything. I'm, I'm not understanding this.
Again, we're, we're only here on Apollo, but we thought it would be helpful for the commission to understand how the other piece of the policy company. So Kim, we want to take it from there.
Yeah, absolutely. So, um, oh, a big component of developing, uh, gas wells here, especially, uh, Marcellus gas wells, which is what we're interested in drilling on Apollo B. Um, a big component of that is water supply. And I understand that that there, we've received a lot of questions from the township over the course of the past year or so, since we've been going through this permitting phase for these various wells on Apollo B. So I wanted to take some time to explain to you guys, uh, how, what our plans currently are for supplying water to that site. Um, as you know, and I think some residents mentioned here tonight, it takes about the equivalent of, uh, 5,000 truckloads of water to complete a singular Marcellus gas well. Um, it's a lot of water and we acknowledge that. And I think that HECs has done a pretty good job communicating to the municipality over the course of the, the, the time of our relationship, that, um, it's our desire to eliminate or reduce truck traffic as much as we can, um, when we're developing wells in your township. Uh, so the way to do that is to pipe water from a water source to the well pad. Currently, HECs does have, um, a water source in place, uh, with the, uh, PAWC, um, to provide water to the Apollo B well pad. Um, unfortunately, the rate and volume that we can secure from PAWC is relatively low. Um, it, it is actually about 864 gallons per day, which, as I said, um, it may sound like a lot, but. It is actually about 864 gallons per day, which, as I said, it may sound like a lot, but it's not quite enough to secure efficient operations at the site.
Can I ask what was that again, 864?
864,000 gallons per day. That's through the PAWC. So, if we were to only use that wire source to complete or frac the wells at the Apollo B well site, it would take us about 31 days to frac each well. That's a significant amount of time. In fact, it's way above industry standard, because we need more water than that. So, HECs has been securing or exploring opportunities to, sure.
Sandy, this paper, it gives what she just mentioned. Okay, we just got it. I'm sorry. And it is the Pithia we're talking about, correct?
What would be? Yeah, that would be the name of the water line, that's right. So, so what HECs has been doing is we've been researching ways in which we can more quickly deliver water to this site. Higher rates, higher volumes. And that is actually why, a part of the reason why you're seeing proposed changes to the ordinance come back from the Board of Commissioners and the township. So, what we, what we're looking into is a high-rate water withdrawal and a centralized impoundment. And if we can secure plans to do that, we would then be receiving water at a rate of about 4 million gallons per day. This is the right amount of water for efficient oil and gas operations. And instead of completing a well in 31 days, we could then complete a well in nine days. It's a significant reduction. So, we do intend to complete, as Blaine mentioned earlier, five wells currently on the Apollo B well pad. And then, as you likely know, we do have plans to do six wells. We're permitting eight, but we would like to, we're likely only going to do six at this time at the Plutus location that we had proposed in before the township. So, right there, we're talking about 11 wells. And when you look at the comparison of using the PAWC water source only, or a high-rate river water withdrawal, we're reducing the active operations times, time for fracking, from 345 days or 11 months, down to 99 days or about three months, which is sincerely the standard for oil and gas operations. That's optimal performance. So, other potential setbacks from the PAWC water withdrawal include running into drought precautions or maintenance that the PAWC has to perform on their line. We would then, at that point, if it's our only water source that we can pipe into the facility, we would then be forced to truck water, truck, truck water into the site. And that would be at a, at a rate of potentially 400 trucks per day. It's a lot of truck traffic to be in your community, and we're, we're doing our due diligence to try to minimize that. Because I know, as it's been clarified here tonight, traffic is a really sensitive area in the township. I want to illustrate for you on the map where these projects come into play and how they come into play. So, the green line here, it actually goes through communities other than Elizabeth Township, so it affects surrounding communities as well. The green line is our haul route for the Apollo B well pad, as well as the Plutus, proposed Plutus well pad. Water truck traffic would be going up here and to these various pad locations. What we're proposing is a freshwater intake facility that would be located down near the river, around here. And that freshwater intake facility, the surface disturbance there is pretty minimal. It's about 600 square feet. It would be an enclosed building that houses two pumps, and it would withdraw water from the river, and then those two pumps would pump the water up to a freshwater impoundment. From the impoundment, it would be staged, the water would be staged there. And from the impoundment, it would then be piped to various pad sites in the township, including Apollo B. Apollo B, Plutus, potentially other locations that we need to use water for in the township as well. So, we're eliminating a significant number of truck traffic. And if we do the math on the 5,000 trucks per well, 11 wells, 55,000 trucks, that's a lot of trucks. And not to mention that they go into the pad and then they leave the pad and go the other way. So, we're trying to minimize the impact to the community, because we know it's very important for everyone. And then, at the same time, if we can secure this sort of a system within the municipality, we're also reducing our operations time. So, we know that there are people who are sensitive to operations in the township, and we feel that reducing the time of completions operations by about 250 days for just 11 wells is pretty significant. So, that's, that's, that's our story. I'm open to take any questions, or Blaine, if you have any questions for me.
Okay, you're talking a pump. Okay, two of them now, not just one.
Well, they would be enclosed in the same building. I, my understanding is that we really.
So, would it be noise? Would it be noise?
Minimal noise, very minimal noise. The pumps will be enclosed in a structure. We do not anticipate that people nearby the pump house or pump station, what we would call it, we don't envision that anyone will even know that it's running.
Exactly what it is not, just anticipate. Secondly.
Let me, if you don't mind.
My regret about was Newton and Sweetley Township and all of them, and our results, and so that's why I'm asking you.
And I understand that, and let me clarify. This water plan, you know, the water withdrawal and the tank pad or the freshwater impoundment, both of those projects will have to go through the processes to be approved through the township. So, you'll have the opportunity to really dive into the details on those. I, I wanted to present this overarching plan for you guys, so that you understand how Apollo B, what the experience will be there. And then, in addition, I think it helps clarify some of the questions that our residents raised regarding the changes to the ordinance. So, I just wanted to clarify that for you.
Okay, and then I guess my last one. I'm confused, because when I was looking at the literature we got from McCall, it seemed like you were showing it going to a tank pad. Now, I heard the word pond.
Yes, the tank pad, those terms are pretty interchangeable at this stage. So, the CDO tank pad would be the CDO freshwater impoundment. The tanks would store freshwater. A tank, a tank pad and a freshwater impoundment, in our operational definitions, are interchangeable.
But not the word pond, because I think of a pond as an in-the-ground lined.
I understand, yes. This would be basically, it would be above ground. It will not be a pond.
It will not be in the ground.
Right, that's what our plan is, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Pond, okay.
Yeah.
So, does anyone else have any questions?
Andrew, did you have a question from the audience? I don't have a calculator and I'm a little bit slow. When you said 4 million gallons a day, is that for one well? And it's pumping continuously through the day, the numbers.
4 million gallons per day is the rate at which we could get water if we need it. We don't envision needing to take that much water from the river all the time. And let me remind you guys, in case anyone's curious, the water withdrawal portion of this project, while we will go through the township to receive approval for that facility, the DEP will regulate what amount of water we're permitted to take from the, to take from the river to use for our operations. So, there are a lot of clearances that we'll have to receive, and there are a lot of precautions that will be utilized from various agencies throughout that period.
Yes. So, assuming for a moment that you have all your permits in place.
Yeah, you're going to ask a question from the audience, let him get a mic so we can get it recorded.
Assuming for a minute that you have all your permits in place for the impoundment and pump station.
Please, please give your name.
Kyle Walk, 609 over there. If you had all your permits in place, all, approximately how long do you expect it would take to build a pump station in the province? Recule to that. When will drilling actually begin at Apollo B?
So, I believe that, oh, do you want to answer this, Phil?
Yeah. Advance hazard, the time for the construction of the water infrastructure that she just mentioned, about four months. And the, but we don't need that for the drilling of the well, which is needed for the completion of wells. The Apollo wells right now are slated for anywhere from December to January. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you guys for your time. We sincerely appreciate it.
Thank you.
I have, can I ask a question? Seriously. Can I ask?
What, so what is the dimensions of the pond that you would be looking at?
And again, I just want to reiterate.
I'm not trying.
I understand, I just want to reiterate for all of you, yeah, the pond, the impoundment, the freshwater impoundment is not part of their application here today. That would be part of a future procedure, conditional use. So, they will, if they intend to do this, or this is permissible, they will come back and they'll have a lot more details. I think the point that they were trying to make is just, is how this is going to impact the truck traffic. So, I just want to be clear, like, they may not have their answers, only because this is not part of their application. I just want to make sure that's clear.
I don't have the exact answer, but I believe the footprint is about two acres for the, for the site.
I think it's around 425 by 500, the CTO.
Ma'am, I can't, I'm sorry.
All right. Also, just a quick FYI to everyone. Holly and Holly sent an email to myself and to Matt, and it pretty much explains everything what this young lady just mentioned about they have 64,000 gallons of water and so forth. So, I gave an email to John, so if anyone's interested in getting one, because I have a few here with me tonight, but contact him. This should give you everything that she just talked about. Okay? Okay? Thank you.
Usually I have to speak in these. She mentioned that, I didn't hear it, so it's more of an explanation. The reason that the commissioner sent it back to you? I was at the meetings, I never heard that there was a specific reason that it was sent back, just that it was. So, that's what I'm trying to find out. I don't remember, I couldn't hear what she said.
I was at the meeting. I'm actually unaware of any specific issue that was, I have been asked to address in the ordinance, to address with the planning commission from the commissioner. So, I, they just voted to send it back, or they never, I haven't obviously seen any explanation, so I don't really know the reason, I can't.
Yeah, because part of what she said was.
Yeah, well, part of the history was, right, that this, this original ordinance went through planning for a long time.
Yeah.
It finally came out. Again, one of the, one of the things that this planning commission decided was that they wanted to have an impoundment on each site. On each well site, they wanted a set of, an impoundment, okay? Which, I mean, it just has impacts on traffic and everything else. Good or bad, whatever, I mean, they have to pump it in for all of it. But that's what this planning commission decided. It went to the commissioners under that structure. The commissioners, during a meeting, decided in discussion of that ordinance, no, we want to, we would rather have a centralized impoundment, because again, it eliminates this truck traffic. That is a philosophy that the commissioners as a body decided.
Okay.
And so, what happened is, they decided that at one meeting. I went back, and I had to revise, I had to make revision myself to the ordinance, because to provide for what they've said that they wanted to have, right? So, I came back and said, okay, you guys want to allow a centralized impoundment, here are the changes that will allow a centralized impoundment. I presented that to them at a meeting, and during that meeting, it was decided, for whatever reason, to send the, to not only vote it up or down. They said, we're not going to vote this up or down, we want to send it back to planning.
Okay.
So, that's why it's back here.
Well, because I'm not the only one that went, excuse me, what did she say? So, there is a misunderstanding there, I think maybe even at the commissioners' meeting, as to exactly, exactly. We knew it was back, but not exactly why. So, I, that's the reason what she said.
Again, I don't believe that the commissioners were confused. I mean, they know the, they know the votes would be up or down.
I was confused.
Okay, again, so I don't, I don't, I don't have the answer.
Okay.
I don't know either.
Okay, thank you.
At one time, they were going to use public water, that was right, so I think the amount, we talked, just having separate impoundments. Since they're not going to do that, and they'd rather use freshwater, it just made more sense than to have a centralized versus. I recall, Sandy, I think you were there too. They just want to use, that's why American Water, for all that accounts. So, we figured it might be better to have separate ones versus one central one.
Okay, I just don't think that that was clear in the commissioners' meeting, which is the reason why I went, excuse me? She must have something left me there.
Since they plan to do that, they don't want to do that for whatever reason. They don't want to centralize, and they want to put it on the Plutus site, and then have pipes then going to the Apollo site to feed it as well.
And so.
So, this does all come from Hunter then?
If this goes back, then if setbacks or something else, the commissioners went, yeah, but you didn't change this or that, does that mean it comes back to plan?
It depends on what type of change it is. If it's a substantive change, you got to agree, you got to go through the prior approvals again. If not, then it can, it can still be passed by the commissioners if it's not a substantive change.
Okay, thank you.
How's that determined?
Okay, thank you.
How is substantive?
Is it, is it, is it a major change? I mean, there's nothing saying, you know, it's, there's nothing, there's no clear right line.
So, something I think might be major, someone else might think is minor.
It might be.
So, setbacks, would that be a substantive, substantive, I'm going to be like you, I can't say that.
Substantive change.
Probably, okay, thank you. We were, I think, in the back.
Yeah, no, no, I understand.
And so, with that, we concluded our presentation as it relates to the Apollo B well pad, as would ask the planning commissioner.
My only questions were the 1U and the 3U that were on there, and they said to ignore them. And my other concern was seven M and nine M were also on McCall, so I didn't know. The wells could be on both, I know they're not there yet. Okay, those were my concerns. Okay. All right, I'd like to have a motion to, what you meant this, to be moved along to the commissioners. Second.
I would second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Next on our agenda is the oil and gas operations ordinance.
So, the, again, the ordinance that we're looking at now is dived in with the changes that I made that allow centralized and centralized impoundment. And I'll go through those briefly. So, you all got a copy of the changes, the yellow changes were the changes that you all recommended the last go-around, that finally went to the commissioners. And the green changes are the changes that I recommended to the commissioners, and I'll go through each one of those and just discuss them briefly. There was a suggest, there's a suggestive change for freshwater. The only changes that I really made is I took out potable, because I think that, I don't want to get into an issue about drinking versus non-drinking. I think I added municipal tap, I think was the other thing I added, but it essentially kept that definition the same. The next change was.
Could I speak to that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, freshwater, you took out potable.
Right.
But rather than, you also added.
Yeah, I think I was gonna say the tap was what I did.
Water retained. Okay, I would like to add river. You added, or other source, I don't know what an other source might be, so I'd like to be real specific, and just make it lake, water well, spring, or a river that has been utilized in commercial industrial operations, and continue with the freshwater, does not include exploration, production, Plutus. fluids, such as produced water, flowback fluids, reused water, minus, all I do is say, make it a river. I don't like to, not only did you take out potable, but you added other source, which was not in there before. So what's the other source?
Again, I didn't want to limit, if they're using freshwater, I didn't, I don't, you know, it's, again, my, this is my own brand in coming up with these things. You know, to me, I didn't want to limit where they can get the water from, whether it's a river, whether it's a stream, I didn't want to limit it specifically to drinking water. So I was trying to expand it in a way.
Right, that makes sense.
So any source, to me, any source, again, I didn't want to, again, I didn't, I didn't list, you know, creek, I didn't list river. I didn't, you know, when you start, you didn't, I didn't, well, it could be other source in there, it's thinking there could be other, any, any number of other sources where they can get this type of water. I mean, I don't know, if you add river, or anything else, I don't know what that's, I don't think it's up to the commission, whatever you guys want to do.
I just worry about, you know, water coming from other wells.
Yeah, where are you worried about? I guess maybe that's where we need to focus on. Where, what other source would you be worried about it coming from, maybe?
Well, at the time, I guess I was worried about it coming from another well.
Well, it can't because it's...
Well, centralized impoundment, freshwater is centralized impoundment.
You know, in industrial or industrial operations, takes care of that.
I mean, if it's, if it's not from the, yeah, it's not, they can't use that.
And we're still keeping the second sentence on including production.
Okay. Just my thought.
Okay, well, next was...
Freshwater impoundment.
Yeah.
Well, freshwater...
No, that was our, we already said that. I was trying to go over my new, you're the new ones.
Just the new ones, and then we can come back to the other ones.
Yeah, let me go through the new ones. I think the changes that I made on B, B and B1, I think just sort of cleaned, those were clean-up language issues, I think, that I saw.
You're on your zoning?
Yeah, it's under 603B and B1. Those less stands that I put in there, I think were just cleanup issues, and then that second, where I added prosecutors, I don't have the ability to prove that, I think that was another cleanup issue, just to make it mirror what the other section said.
Okay, can I speak to that about the waivers? I don't think there should be any waivers other than the host or the owner of the property if they ask for a waiver. I don't think that you should ask surrounding properties to sign waivers. I think they'll make it for bad neighbors getting along, I think it could bring all kinds of issues.
Well, the issue...
I think if the person who hosts the well wants something less than we're allowing, then they should be, you know, then the commissioners can look at it. But I don't think that you should ask surrounding people to do waivers. I think an ordinance, I might, John, maybe you know, an ordinance is an ordinance. I mean, we don't have waivers for adult bookstores, we don't have waivers for billboards, we don't have waivers for you can only have eight pets. So why is oil and gas different?
Well, and again, this, this doesn't mean that you have to grant a waiver. This means that it gives the power, the ability of the commissioners as long as the affected property owners...
But the affected property owners might feel pressured.
Well, the affected property owners may not sign a waiver, and then they, then there's nothing, there's no ability for the commissioners to do anything. The more waivers that you ask, the more difficult it becomes to begin the waiver.
Just want to know, Matt, would the waiver go to the neighbors at that point?
Say that?
The waiver?
The waiver, the way that, the way this works, it's covering, it's another community I represent, the way that it works is that the property, the person hosting the well, and then anybody within a certain distance would have to sign a waiver and say, we're okay with whatever the activity is. They would present that to the governing board, and the governing board, based on that, has the ability. They don't, it's not mandatory, they're not required to, but they can say, yes, we'll consider this, and we can go ahead and grant that waiver for X, Y, and Z.
But I mean, they can't supersede a home with a waiver.
No, so like, if, if, if one homeowner, if you require within a certain zone, and one homeowner is not signing a waiver, then there's, then it's not.
Well, okay, I'm going to ask a question then. I know we're not talking about it, but just as an example, I noticed on the McCall property, and what they did is they put an amendment to their lease saying that nothing could be within 500 feet of their home, but yet when I saw the tank pad, it's at 400 feet, and in the things, it's asking to go less than. Why would you ever ask your neighbors to take something less than you are willing to give?
Wait, say...
Yeah, what I'm saying is, there's an attachment, because it was in our patent, to the McCall lease, and it says nothing should be within 500 feet of their home. And so I noticed that the well pad...
Do you need your requirements?
Well, the well pad and the tank pad are more than 500 feet from their home, but it's within 400 feet of their neighbors' homes. So my question is this, are you asking the neighbors to sign a waiver so it's less than 400, or, I mean, if the McCall's want to sign a waiver and make it less, I guess that's fine, but do you understand what I'm saying? You're asking, you're putting things closer to the neighbors, and then asking for like...
Not under, not the way this is structured. If it's 500 feet, it's 500 feet all the way around. So whoever is within that 500 feet, everybody would have to sign, all of them. Does that make sense?
Well, I think I'm, I'm really with the well pad. But I mean, you're asking...
Yeah, so like, if you, so like, like a well pad, for instance...
Tank pad, I'm sorry, tank pad.
Okay, tank pad. So if tank pad is here, and it's within, you, you, you know, you draw a circle, you know, 500 feet, you gotta get every property owner within that circle to sign a waiver. If one person says, no, I don't care if it's a guy who goes to the well or not, it doesn't matter, if they don't sign the waiver, then that provision makes it impossible to get to the commissioners.
I still think...
Everybody has to sign it, and present it to the commissioners, and the commissioners even can still say, no, we want to keep it the way it is.
In my opinion, if we're going to write an ordinance, we should have the numbers there, and that's what they should be. I don't, I don't believe in waivers, but that's my opinion, and you people have to make it up.
Anyway.
Scott Taylor, 304 Mohawks.
All right.
No worries. Very good, it was loud enough. Scott Taylor, 304 Mohawk, regarding these waivers, the state minimum setback is 500 feet. Does this township have the authority to go under that 500 feet?
You do not.
Then why are we entertaining a waiver?
Well, because, because ours is not, our minimum is not 500 feet, it's 750.
The state, the state's minimum descent is 500 feet.
Okay.
You can go greater than, you can go greater than, but not less than.
That's correct. And our, under the new ordinance, under the proposed ordinance, the setback is 750. So this would cover anything between that 500 and 750.
But your ordinance, but that, but that draft says less than, so just like Ted, right, it's five.
It's impossible to go less than 500, so it's going to be between 500 and 750.
Okay, and you can't, you can't... I think you need to clarify that language, and that's all.
You can't supersede with it, with the EP requirements, if they can't get permits for that anyway.
I understand, that's my point, I just make, just, language needs to be done.
So what you want, you want something that has a minimum of 500 feet?
You can't go less than 500 feet, state that.
Nobody, nobody.
Right.
I have a question.
And we still have a conflict there between the two, edge of well pad and the drill four.
And am I beating a dead horse here with forward township 1500 feet from a wellhead to an existing building?
Has anyone talked to the forward township supervisor about why that was a... Okay. I, I'm...
Would you be willing to shed some light? You lived through it.
I'm not, I'm not a supervisor anymore, that's for them to discuss. I don't make decisions, I just, I do, I do what boards tell me to do. I make changes that they tell me to do, I don't make changes.
I just have one quick question. Do you have, do you have the pre, before that green that you have there?
The prior version?
The prior version.
Yeah, you brought up about the penalty, I don't know what it's called, but I brought up my penalty.
I, I can show you. I got the old one right here.
The prior version of before you changed it to the green?
I never changed the penalty, so I don't know.
No, I'm not talking about, talking about the, talking about the less than. I want the yellow before this round to bring up.
It's the same one, same option.
The yellow is, the yellow or green is what you're saying.
The version I always had, the ability for the township to take that.
Do you have the one version before this time?
Yeah.
The phrase where it got changed to the less than 700, 50 feet, what did it use to say in the version before this?
Oh, you're talking about the version before planning?
Before the, when it left planning, I'm asking for when it left...
The version that left planning was 750.
Okay, but it said something in there about, it's between 500 and 750.
Yeah, located between 500 and 750.
Right, and it already said those words, and these words got changed to less than 750, so that between 500 and 750...
I mean, I could put, I could put 500 and 750, but I'm just saying, they can't do anything under...
Well, I'd rather they have the, because that previous version, between 500 and 750 is where we were when it was on that plane. That's what it was, right?
If I could, yes, the state requirement is likely from the well board to nearby building, it can be waived, it typically oftentimes is because you often will have the surface owner, they have a, their home or structure may be closer than that, so it...
It deals with the property owner then, is that what you're talking about?
Well, I mean, anybody within 500 feet can waive the state requirement.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Now, you're proposing effectively a requirement that takes 750 from the engine well board, basically by doubling what the state is, but it, it's possible that someone would waive the state requirement, but again, argue with that, typically it's going to be the surface owner, but it may be somebody else that is a lesser or this nearby that is amenable to the same thing, and that's why what you're seeing are these significantly increased setbacks for understandable reasons, but also acknowledging that affected property owners are okay with a lesser distance.
And they wait.
And you see these types of ordinance providers a good bit then.
So you guys can think about that, I, let me just get through these, and then you guys can have a discussion. Down the E, freshwater impoundments, that is actually defining, requiring it to be a conditional use, 300 feet from existing building, and then again, with a waiver of 300 feet. F, freshwater intake facilities, again, requiring that to be conditional use in all seven districts, pump station building being at least 200 feet from existing building, again, what, where it's waived right there. And then I think the question on the removal of the number of wellheads, Scott, I think you brought that up. That was actually because the language as it was currently written, you could argue, and I think Mr. Lucas sort of verbalized that in their application, you could argue that the current language doesn't require them to come back for a whole new procedure, but it was just, it's just a modification, so in theory, they could apply for one wellhead, and then the remainders would just be modifications to which they would just have to get building permits. So this is cleaning that up to make them come through the whole new process again, which I've requested to stay new here, and they, they have done here, so that's, that's the reason for removing that number of wells.
Okay, well, then, this language still doesn't, as Mr. Lucas pointed out, still does not require them to come back here for every modification.
For the number of wells, it does.
Or anything.
How, how so?
All they need is a zoning permit, all they gotta do is supply an application to John, and John gives them a, there's nothing that says that any modification has to come back through the conditional use permit process. He pointed that out himself earlier.
When it said number of wells, that was his argument, because it said number of wells.
But each time they come back for more wells, we get more money, and that's the idea of the township wanting more money.
So that we can also, they have to reapply?
It's, that's not, that's not, it's, and again, it's not about money as much as it's about making them come through a transparent process so that you guys and the public can ask questions and go through this procedure. You know, if they just do a modification, you know them, that's it. It never comes back through here, the public doesn't get to ask questions, it's not, there's not a process. And my feeling has always been about transparency, making sure that they come through, the questions are asked, I'm not saying everybody in this room's going to agree or disagree as to whether or not they want this, it should be approved, how it should be approved, what, what the language should be, but again, I think it's important to me, as it is in all my other communities, to have that discussion, to have this open discussion about what's happening in our township. So again, that's the purpose, it's not about the money, it's about making sure there's a process so that the public knows what's happening and has opportunity to ask questions.
Okay, well, like, and again, I'll, I'll read it. Prior to making modification to an existing, existing and certified oil and gas well site to alter the size, location, wells or no wells, accessory equipment and structures, the owner and operator shall make a written application for and obtain a modified zoning something for the township pursuant to, to this ordinance. There's nothing in there that says it has to go through the...
Yeah, but if you go back through the original definitions of what oil and gas operations are, I think that's what, that's what makes them come back through. Because a well is, the drilling of a well is an oil and gas operation, which then, which triggers the conditional use process. The only issue is, the only issue that needed, I think, cleaned up was whenever you do, whenever you're changing just the number, is that a modification, or is that a new process? To take the number out of that and say, these are what modifications are, the rest of these are just new oil and gas operations, then you go back through the process.
I still think it's gray, gray water, as we've talked before. Ambiguity goes in their favor in court system. You guys need teeth in your ordinance, that's why we're here.
They're here, first of all. I mean, I think if they wanted to challenge us on, on...
Per, per your request, per your request, his words.
Yeah, but he, he certainly doesn't have to abide by, my request means nothing.
You're right, and neither does his ordinance, and that's my point.
And so my, the point is, is that Hex, Hex could have told me to go pound sand, he could say, hey, this is a long...
You're absolutely right.
Whatever.
That's, that's why I said, this does not support your argument, it needs to.
I don't know what you're saying, Scott, like, I'm trying to be open-minded, but I'm, the change that I'm trying to make is favorable to the township, so I don't know what you're, what you're challenging me on. What do you suggest we do then?
That all modifications, including number of wells, any number of wells, if you go one to two, one to 50, have to go through the conditional use process.
Yeah, but if...
Very specific.
Well, I'm just saying, if you, so like, they change accessory equipment, okay?
Yep.
So like, they move, they move a storage building in or something, they change a storage building, you want them to come back through the whole conditional use process?
Yeah.
That's, that's up for the board. Again, I mean, I don't, I don't make decisions, I do whatever my board's telling me to do. So if that's what these guys want, they can do that. I'm just saying, that's not the way this draft is, it wasn't drafted to make every single change go through this whole process and have to go through a public hearing and do whatever they're, change a, a trailer out. You know what I mean? The purpose is that if they're drilling new wells, that's, that to me is something I think that requires public discussion. To me, minor changes...
I, I could agree with that, but again, no, no matter what, how you determine modification, nothing forces them to come back through the process.
I mean, I'm, I'm going to respectfully disagree with you.
That's fine.
It's my opinion, since this is my draft, it's my opinion that this would hold up to make them come do, come, come through the conditional use require, uh, procedure for changing the number of wells, which is what my intent and what I'm presenting to this board, so, I mean, with all due respect, I understand what you're saying.
Interesting.
I mean, I, I believe strongly that this, this accomplishes what we need to accomplish. And it's cleaning up an issue, honestly, it was an issue, it's, it was a, to me, it was a hole in our ordinance. I didn't draft our original, to me, it was a hole in the ordinance that needed to be cleaned up, and to me, I've done, and that's my opinion.
The language you just used, could you write that? That was much better. You know, what you just said about the number of wells will cause a conditional use?
No, that's what Scott said. Scott's assessment was to say, he wanted to say that any modification requires a new conditional use application. He wants it to say any modification to existing or certified, certified oil and gas well site is subject to...
But then you said the number of wells will...
I'm taking out the number of wells.
No, you said will, will do a conditional.
That's what I've proposed.
Yeah.
Right now...
Yeah, but I don't see that in writing, um, all, the number of wells will.
Zeroed number of wells.
Yeah.
And as I said, I'll respectfully, I, it's respectfully, it's my legal opinion that that cleans up the issue of requiring them to come through the conditional use procedure when they're adding a number, another well, that's my opinion, if you guys wanna create a new language, listen, I'm here to do what you want, you want new language, let's do new language, but I'm saying that I was asked to clean that, that, it was my fault to clean that issue up. I'm removing, right?
Yeah.
That's, that's exactly, that's because it goes, falls back to the oil and gas operation, but again, that's mine. Those are, those are, those are all the changes that I have on, um, that relate to the centralized. Anyone, anyone else?
Really quick, just really quick.
I'm just.
Yeah, just really quick, because I was actually gonna sign up to speak tonight, um, about the oil and gas ordinance, but, uh, sorry, Megan McDonough, okay, so, the question that I had was, um, you know, before the meeting, and we kinda had a discussion about this, is if anybody knew from the planning commission what the specifics were from the board of commissioners on the reasoning that they sent it back, right, so, and I was gonna speak to that tonight, ask that the planning commissioner, I think everybody, um, on your side of the table and ours, uh, would be much better served if you guys went ahead and asked and requested from the commissioners a list of specifics that they'd like to see in this ordinance, so that you could start there, I mean, I understand that we're looking at changes that you proposed, Matt, but at the same time, I think that depending on what the commissioners want, those could all change too, and I don't know that there's a whole lot of point to go through this line by line tonight, if we don't know what the board who originally sent this back to planning actually wants.
I, I was at, actually, I was just gonna ask that question, Megan, is, is there a way for us to ask maybe a point of clarification as to why it came back and what they would like to see added?
Was it just the impoundment, or did they want some?
Well, that's the thing, they, nobody's asked.
They can say it to me.
Nobody's asked, and, and Kyle pointed out tonight that he would like to see it in industrial zones only and setbacks increase, so I think that there's a larger issue as far as the commissioners are concerned than just impoundments at this point.
Would it be possible to send an email and go out to them and make submitted questions to you on the listing?
And if I can't, if, if I can just interject really quick, I would probably ask, um, that that be made public record, because I know myself as a resident, uh, when it comes to transparency and accountability, and those are two of the most utmost important things to me as a resident living here, and I would like to know where our commissioners stand on this, instead of just asking them.
I mean, I'll be honest with you, that depends on how the communication works, so if they're writing, they're writing it to me.
Right, so, question B, can there be a formal request that is made part of the public record by the planning commission, from the commissioners? That way, everybody, that way, everybody in the room, including on your side of the table and ours, as residents as well, all have the same information, we all have the same knowledge, especially coming into these meetings, and actually be able to effectively work on the ordinance, instead of just batting it back and forth.
Okay, we have several commissioners here, some of your.
Yeah, so would you guys, would you guys be willing to make a list of changes that you guys would like to see? Okay, well, we have one there, I know Kyle's two.
You know what, I'm embarrassed, I'll tell you why I'm embarrassed, to think we sent this back just to send it back, I know what you're, I, I'm tired of your smirk, and, and that right now, let's get her off the table.
Hey, hey, don't.
You don't, you don't?
Don't, don't, seriously, just say your point, please.
I'll say what I want to, I, I will say what I want to, I've been around for 40 years, I've worked for 15 attorneys.
My point is.
I don't, it's not my first, I'm not giving you my resume, we sent it, but one of the things was the 1500, we didn't send it, we, if we sent it back just to send it back, which stupid as hell.
Well, not one commissioner, including, not one commissioner, including you, told me the reason it was being sent back or anything, I should, I should incorporate it into the.
And we, we, the other one's the pump station down in Blackfield.
What about it?
The location, especially now that we're gonna put a playground in down there, and I'm not opposed to it down there, but I think it should be moved back further, should be moved down the river further, there's another good point, I was born and raised there, that river is low in the summer, I mean, you can walk, we brought the cross to it, but where there were reasons, we didn't send it back just to send it back. Do you agree with me?
Yes, yes, yes.
I mean, you know, you've got some bright people on this board, they wouldn't do it for that.
Well, Don, why did you send it back to them, why? Why, why was it, why was it sent back to the planning?
One was the 1500.
Okay, well, they're not even, they're not even entertaining that.
That was one of the beliefs that I remember.
I mean, just, just as a suggestion, Mr., I mean, just to say, Mr. Coosman and Mr. Evans were also quoted in the Mont Valley Independent as stating that they wanted to see an increase in the setbacks, so, I mean, I think there's.
I'm, I'm, I'm Russ Cervanny, I was at those meetings, okay, the, uh, what you set up to the commissioners came up, and I came up, apparently stupidly, made a comment saying, hey, I think you need centralized impoundments, they agreed, okay, Mr. Rakunis went back, made some changes, brought it back up again, there was a discussion, and I didn't hear anybody saying, you, Don, for one, that you wanted 1500 feet or something like that, and send it back for that reason. So I just said, okay, we'll send it back, and the best impression I got of it is because they felt that the impoundment was a major change.
We want 1500, we wanted them to consider it because we were getting information.
But no one sent there and said, they wanted them to reconsider the setbacks.
We can't tell what we're doing.
No, you can't, you can't, you can actually introduce the ordinance.
I don't.
You could make the changes as the commi, commissioners, and then it would go through a completely different process, where these guys would only have a limited timeframe to dis, to deal with it, and then it comes back, so, I mean, that's, that's not accurate, I mean, the fact is, is that certainly if you, if the commissioners would have made suggested changes, if you had said that 1500, I would have prepared something for this commission to have in front of them this evening, I wasn't told any changes to make, I was told, send it back to planning, so the version that I sent back to planning was the version that the commissioners had at that last meeting, I wasn't ever told anything to put in there.
The impression. I, I didn't hear any of the commissioners stand up and say, the setbacks are too short, we want them longer, send it back and have them reconsider it, they did not do that.
They actually, I mean, I'm, I'm just playing devil's advocate here, Russ, uh, but they actually.
They get to speak on the mic.
Megan McDonough?
Okay, so, uh, you know, I think the confusion is, at that meeting, um, it's actually recorded, is actually on YouTube, I was not there, and the reason that I know that they want the heightened setbacks is because I watched the video, and some of them did actually state that the setbacks was an issue that they had.
Absolutely.
What's up? Well, and that's why I asked here tonight, you know, and like I said before the meeting, you know, what are, you know, what are the specifics, do we even know what the specifics are at this point from the commissioners, because I think even discussing it tonight is a moot point without having those recommendations, or at least suggestions from the commissioners, I'm simply asking that a formal request be made of, you know, from the planning commission to the commissioners, to each make, sit down, make a list, because, like I said, I, as a resident, I'd like to know where my commissioners stand on this too. Okay, perfect.
Getting tired of talking to you people anyways, municipal planning code gives you the authority to do whatever you want to do, communications with the commissioners, with the board, with everything, not going through Matt Rakunis, you can ask, you can recommend back to the commissioners.
She asked me if they could do that, I said, yes, they can, I'm, I'm.
I'm pissed off that she doesn't know her job, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm pissed off that she doesn't know her job, and you don't teach her her job.
Being the new guy on the block, um, I would tell you all it's a big learning process, I'll just go, and I'm not one to jump up and die yelling and scream, I have to think about things for a while, I have to take a, just learn. My overview, which just gives you the base answer as to why the commissioners sent this back, was commissioners don't have any time to discuss things, we don't have enough communication. We talked about this briefly in front of the residents. Can't talk about it in our back door, our, uh, uh, there you go. Uh, I would be willing to bet that Matt will agree with this statement, I'm the only one that called him, I spent with him for an hour privately, once, and 45 minutes privately, another time, and he did a very good job of explaining all the changes that he felt should be done with this. I'm in favor of freshwater impoundments if we allow oil and gas exploration to continue, because that will help with Plutus, it will help with the Karatik site, but it's not gonna help at all for Apollo B, there's still gonna be a load on the trucks, and all that being said, what I'm trying to get through to y'all is that commissioners don't have enough communication, we rely on that, and I wasn't knowledgeable enough, I didn't have enough knowledge at the time to bring these things up, in the brief amount of time that we have to discuss it at a commissioners' meeting, what we dedicate five minutes. Not making excuses, but that's why I went back.
Because the meetings are too short, everyone's being rushed out.
Well, another part of the problem is the format, the format of the meetings, we have two meetings a month, I'm sorry, one of these meetings should be for no comment from the public meeting, I mean, we could sit there for two and a half hours and talk about these things, and nobody interrupts us, wouldn't that be amazing? Well, it's that way at other municipalities.
You're right.
Well, I pay taxes, and I, I'm gonna talk every meeting, used to be that way, used to be, I actually.
Then we should have four meetings a month, then we should have six meetings a month, if there's not enough, we don't have enough discussion.
Then making, I mean, I know everybody works, I know that works, a lot of us get that, but, you know, I'm here almost every meeting, every other Monday of the month, some, some of them were in and out. Where the hell's everyone going? There's elected officials, the public needs to say things, we can't run the whole thing in four minutes.
So, what we're gonna do is, we're going to, I mean, I need to get it back to you guys, but we're gonna get back to the commissioners, make a list of questions, or comments, or any decision, excuse me.
Yeah, yeah, we can't, we really can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, uh, well, what we'll do is, we'll have your questions, because we don't know what you're looking for, okay, we can't read your minds, so, if you keep doing this, give it to Matt, give it to John, whatever, so that we each can get it, look it over, and then we can discuss it at the next meeting.
How are those, how are those questions gonna come to us?
It's up to you, when you look at this ordinance, okay?
Oh, no, I've, I've, I've read through this several times.
Give them to Matt.
So how are they, are these questions gonna be given to us?
Give it to Matt.
What question, I don't think she's saying questions, I think she's saying.
Comments or suggestions.
Suggesting, suggesting the ordinance.
Just remember, with the sunshine laws, you can't do this with emails.
Just the commissioners.
Ma- Madam Chairman, draft the letter to your commissioners.
Scott, let me finish what I'm saying, just send a letter or comments that you want, your commissioners are out there, Joanne, Donald, uh, Kyle, and all the rest, they're not here, but, you know, you can pay, give it to Matt, so that we have an idea of what you want, okay, does, does that make sense, and is that reasonable? Wonderful.
Again, they're sending them to me, that's, that's the problem, I mean, if you, if they're not, I mean, if they sent their individual comments to me, but again, that's what I'll tell you. Well, here's what I'll tell you, here's what I'll tell you, um, if they put, if they wanna suggest a change in, a change in there, it will be in there, and it will be highlighted in a different color from this first. I don't care, I mean.
Can you, well, if you know what we adjusted in, in the draft?
If the commissioners don't care and they want it to be public, then they can send it to them all.
It's up to you, I mean, the commissioners, it's.
Can we do it in such way, other than just say you tell your other commissioners something?
You know what, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry.
If you're gonna talk behalf of the, like, if you're trying to do minutes already.
All I'm asking is, instead of just saying the three commissioners here, if you can let the other commissioners know.
Yeah, I just mentioned that before.
But I know, is there any way to make it be a more formal?
Yeah, they'll send, they'll send, we'll send a letter letting them know, if you want, I can even send them a letter, saying, requesting them to give us what they want, does that sound, would that work? Would that be okay with the commissioners?
That'd be great.
Okay, wonderful, okay, uh, last thing we want to discuss is our next meeting, which is on November 21st, that's the night before the Thanksgiving, uh...
I'm available.
Are we, are we good?
Yeah.
That's what we're gonna discuss.
I'm available November 15th, I don't have a sound for anybody.
That's a Thursday, is everybody okay with November 15th, that's a Thursday evening, Dan, does that work for you? Mark?
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, a motion to adjourn?
Ask you for a second?
I'm sorry.
Can I come up?
Sure.
Chris Tomo, 127 Grouse Drive, um, I just sat back here, it was pretty quiet, I listened to everybody and all that stuff, and I'll be honest, I would hope that our residents are a little bit more respectful to each individual, the people up here talking, and the people back here, it's total chaos, I mean, everybody's trying to overtalk each other, instead of trying to be able to get a point in, and interrupting, and, and no wonder we can't get anything done, because if you change from one topic to another topic to another topic, and everybody's trying to shut without listening to that, and listen to it, and, you know, the best boards are the ones that listen the most, same way with us as residents, let's take the information in, listen, maybe it may change our point of view on something, one way or the other, but listen, and allow other people to talk, and it was very, uh, disheartening to see what was going on here, and it happens in our commissioner meetings too, so I appeal to the public and to the board and others to show restraint and show the ability to listen to others, and be able to, uh, come to a reasonable conclusion on all issues, thanks.
I agree, and thank you.
Well said.
Was that the last comment, I mean, a motion to adjourn? Dan, second? All favor, guys?